Good evening and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, March the 4th, 2020. At this moment, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded and live streamed from the hdsb.ca website. I would also like to ask that you turn any of your devices to silent mode. This evening, we have trustee Gray remotely and associate director Bog is away, as well as student trustee Lau. Oh, and manager Gorkmaker is not here this evening. In her place, we have manager Denton. Okay, so this evening trustee Amos will be honoring the land.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Adirondack, the Haudenosaunee, Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surround the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississauga's of the credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest this evening? Seeing none. Next, we are up to the agenda. Please note that we did add a fifth Inspire Award recipient this evening. And just to note that in section four, the numbering is a little off. So all those five should be fours. Okay, so is there any discussion at all about the agenda? May I have a... Actually, may I have a mover? Trustee Garretts, seconded by trustee Rocha. And is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so next, we are up to one of my favorite times of the month. It's the Inspire Awards. So everyone in the Halton District School Board community can nominate or be nominated: families, neighbors, related organizations, staff, students, and school volunteers. The Inspire Award is given to an individual or group that is formally or informally associated with the Halton District School Board who support our students and their achievements through exemplary caring initiative, innovation, and creativity. Award recipients choose where they would like to receive their award. And this evening, we have five Inspire Award presentations. For the first one, I will actually be passing the gavel to vice chair Al Harrison because I have to present an award.
Okay, thank you so much. It's my pleasure to speak to you about our first award recipient. And I'd like to invite Chair Grabens, who's already on her way to join our recipient, Laura Aquino Soriano, to the front. She's from Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School. And let me tell you a little bit about her. Laura is a teacher at Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School. She makes sure to create a personal connection with each and every one of her students. She cares deeply about students and puts their mental well-being first. Students say that Laura makes the classroom feel like an open and safe space. She's someone whose students say they can rely on and who they see as a trusted adult. Laura goes the extra mile, and her students want to make sure that she's recognized for that, and so do we. And thank you so very much for all that you do. And if you have any fans in the crowd, you're certainly welcome. They're certainly welcome to come up and take photos along with manager Denton. Thank you so very much. Okay, I'd like to call Sandy Ellsworth from Central Public School, along with trustee
Okay, so as you know, well, actually, Sandy is a teacher at Central Public School. Sandy goes above and beyond to provide support to students in need. She makes sure to provide families with information that will help them support their children's needs. She has a special way of building relationships with students to understand areas in which they are struggling and help them determine strategies to be successful. Sandy is an inspiration to the support staff, teachers, and students she works with. Congratulations. And next, I'd like to call up trustee Daniele and Denise Johnston. Denise is a teacher at Escarpment View Public School. Parents appreciate Denise's advocacy for students and how she works with families to develop strategies to help their children succeed. Denise has the ability to make every student feel special and important. Students say... Oh, sorry. Parents say their children's self-esteem and confidence has improved because of Denise. She instills in students a love for learning and makes them believe anything is possible.
Okay, Chair Grabens, and welcome. Perfect, so let me tell you a bit about Nancy. She's a teacher at Bruce T. Lindley Public School. She began the Breakfast for the Brain initiative through the Halton Food for Thrive program at the school, which ensures that children have food in the mornings. To expand the program, Nancy recruits grade five and six students each year to be nutrition program ambassadors. Through Nancy's drive, innovation, and creativity in the creation of this program, the students develop an important life skills and are empowered to become leaders in their school community. Involvement in the program lays a foundation for students to become caring and contributing global citizens. Nancy is a leader who cares deeply about the community and takes action to improve the lives of others. The students she works with in the program see Nancy as a role model. Thank you so much for all that you do.
We have enough, we can do the wave. And I'd like to call trustee Rocha forward. And I'd like to call, excuse me, Annette Winslow forward. Annette is a volunteer at Oakville-Trefalgar High School and a longtime volunteer within the Halton District School Board. Throughout her numerous volunteer roles over the year, Annette has been the pick representative at three schools in the Halton District School Board. She is always eager and willing to assist on any project. Staff and families appreciate Annette's enthusiasm and dedication. Annette co-leads many events such as Newcomers for Tea and the Staff Appreciation Luncheon. Her skills, insights, and positivity are valued by staff and families at Oakville-Trefalgar High School. Okay, thank you to all recipients for all you do for students in the Halton District School Board. And please, everyone in the room and beyond, please do continue to nominate people or organizations who support our students and their achievements. We accept nominations online at hdsb.ca, and awards are presented monthly. We have no delegations this evening, but we do have a presentation. Superintendent Blackwell, welcome.
Good evening. I'm excited to... I'm gonna just go to the next slide. I'm excited to introduce two students. One student is Michael Barnett, and Michael is here from Burlington Central High School. And we also have Uma Darba, who's here from Robert Bateman High School, as well as principal Lemare from Burlington Central. And they're going to share an update on the work that's happening between Burlington Central and Robert Bateman. I'll give trustees an opportunity to answer questions, and then I'll excuse this group and then finish with a couple of other slides. But we'd also like to acknowledge the work of Jennifer Bright. And Jennifer Bright is the IB coordinator at both schools, and she's unable to join us this evening, but she's a big part of this work. So I'll turn it over to the team.
Thank you very much. It's hard to follow the Inspire Awards, but I do have two really superstar students here who will carry me, so I have no doubt that you will be quite impressed by the work that they have been doing. So I'll start by giving you a bit of the context. This year, our focus has been growing the Accelerated Learning Program at Burlington Central High School. And that is really driven by Jennifer Bright, our IB coordinator. And this is her second year of spending some time at Burlington Central. And the second focus is to transition current Robert Bateman staff and students into Burlington Central High School. So to that end, there were four main things that have been done in terms of promoting the program at Burlington Central. One is through direct communication to all Burlington Central, sorry, Burlington Elementary Schools. And this is through information about the ALP transitions at, through the certs at all the elementary schools in Burlington, as well as invitations to families to the grade eight program nights, as well as the ALP information nights. Jennifer also follows up with student-specific inquiries from the families, and this can range from program queries such as the credentials and post-secondary opportunities to what is this IB program all about. And she follows up with these families as they put in their queries. And the third way is through the Pathways PD sessions that elementary staff have with regards to understanding what the ALP and the IB is. Jennifer also participates by sharing information at the Pathways Evening this past semester at MM Robinson. She has held two very successful information evenings at Burlington Central to promote the ALP and the IB. The second one was in November, and that was very well attended, as you can see in our photo over there, with over 200 people showing up that evening to learn about the ALP. A week later, we had our general grade eight information night, and again, very strong interest about the program from the community. And as I mentioned earlier, coordinator Jennifer Bright has good contact with families, and she follows up with the families at both schools. As I said earlier, she spends time in two buildings, and she meets families at both We've also started to build relationships so as to encourage and promote student transitions. And this is done through Jen's visit to the classrooms. And through these classroom visits, she gets student feedback to find out about their concerns, their excitement, and she shares that back with us at the Integration Committee. And the Student Integration Committee uses the student voice and information to plan opportunities this spring so as to promote and provide meaningful opportunities for the kids to get together. I've also been able to share some communication with families through a newsletter, and I'm working on the next one. We've started to do some joint opportunities that our two students here will be sharing with you. I visited Robert Bateman last semester prior to the winter break, and I plan to do another visit this spring so that I can visit with students there. The clubs and leaders on both, in both buildings, north and south, sorry, yes, north and south, east-west. East-west. Oh, my God. Don't trust me in direction. Yes, I am. We have aligned our, the clubs and sports on both sides so that we can make sure that we can allow for transition, and if there's any overlap, we make sure that both groups talk to each other. And if there's one that's present at the other and that's not in the other, we talk about how we can make it happen. The Burlington Central Guidance Head has also joined Jen Bright at Robert Bateman to participate in the course selection process for our ALP students who are in grade 10 over at Robert Bateman, as well as the grade 11 and 12 students who are certificate students, right? And they were able to select courses with some context and understanding with the Guidance Head from Burlington Central. And hot off the press, you are gonna know about this before anybody does, is that Link Crew has written postcards. Link Crew at Burlington Central has written over 80 postcards to our future RBHS, ALP, and IB students to start some informal introductions. And that will be linked to our May event, when, again, Uma and Michael are gonna share with you about that, just to do some, you know, pen paling, the old-fashioned way. So that's to come. And I'm gonna hand it over to Uma and Michael.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We are going to start with some things that we have done with our integration efforts, and then what we are currently working on, and what we plan to do for the rest of the school year.
So we, on February 13th, we had a joint school dance. So this school, this dance, sorry, was between Nelson, Bateman, and Central, and it was received as a huge success from all ends. Bateman, the, from, reporting from Bateman, the venue was amazing. It was held at a Holiday Inn. The food was great, and there was a lot of inter-school communication, so that received a lot of positive feedback.
Yes, and from Central, we, Student Parliament always tries to seek the opinions of all students from our school, and we have never had to try as little as we did. A lot of students came to us and said the multi-school dance was incredible. They loved the location, the food, and just how many people were able to be there. So overall, it was a really big success.
It was a 500?
500, yes.
And the music?
Yes, they really, they liked the DJ. Sure. So one thing, we did a previous year, we had the author Lawrence Hill come to visit. So the IB students came over to Central. We split them up into two groups. One of them listened to a presentation from Lawrence Hill, and the other came with the members from Student Parliament at Central, and we gave them a tour of the building and some of the classrooms, as well as took some questions and some club suggestions to ensure the students feel welcome when they come over here.
So the Lawrence Hill visit was received also. Amazing, amazing positive feedback from Bateman students. Our IB English teacher actually gave us excerpts from Lawrence Hill's books a week before, and he gave us a week to annotate them and figure out some questions so that when we did actually meet Lawrence Hill, we got the best out of that experience. And I have to say, it was an amazing experience. I learned a lot as a student and just as a person in general. The tour on the second half, we, or the tour that the Student Parliament of Central gave was amazing. Although, we did wish it would have been a bit longer because the school is very big, and we did have a lot of fun. We learned a lot about the workings of the school and the discussions that Michael mentioned about how clubs are gonna work, extracurriculars, classes, and just general student life, really gave a lot of insight and helped a lot of students with their confusion. Especially as IB students, we are all very leadership-focused, and a lot of us exec a lot of clubs, so that was a main worry for a lot of us going into a new school, is that we were gonna lose our exec roles. But those were clarified, and it's all good now. Yes. So earlier, Ms. Lemare was mentioning, again, about student leadership roles and how they will be shared. So just as an example, we have a World Club in Central and Youth in Action in Robert Bateman. So these clubs have the same main objective as charity and community outreach. So we are both supporting the charity, The Gift of Giving Back. It's a community food drive, and it's the largest of its kind in the country. So each year, The Gift of Giving Back chooses a school to partner with. This year, both Central and Bateman are, have participated in food drives and are conducting events that support The Gift of Giving Back's cause.
Yes, and then the last thing on this here is the joint French immersion and search in Quebec City, as you can see on that photo on the right there. The French immersion students from Central, as well as some students from Bateman, a couple of them took a trip to Quebec City. And some things we are currently working on is, so on March 12th, we're having an open mic at Central, and we invited some Bateman students to come to the library and perform. And we're also looking at a possible larger event where we can invite more Bateman students over, same kind of event in April.
Each year, Bateman has an annual show, sorry, a show called Culture Fusion. So since we have an extremely diverse community, we really like to have a show that expresses all of these amazing countries and cultures. So we have dances, music, food, and all kinds of acts from places around the world. It's a very integral part of our school's identity. So this year, we got Central students to perform at the show itself on March 26th, and we're very excited to see what they have in store for us.
So for the joint mural, some of the art students at Central and Robert Bateman are planning some artwork to put up on some of the walls at Central. We've recently undergone some renovations, and we're looking to put some artwork up. And with the integration coming, we decided it would be a good idea to include Robert Bateman students on that. And finally, one of the big things that myself, along with some Halton District School Board student senators, we're working towards an equitable access to, for all students for the upcoming Student Council elections. So we're, we, our main goal is to ensure that each student has the opportunity to seek leadership roles within their school. So we are, we had a meeting today, and we are definitely on track to getting that process finalized. And some of the main things we're working on is the election process, as well as the guidelines for how Student Parliament will look next year.
So both schools host coffee houses. However, Central's are during the school day and their recurring events every month. Ours happen normally once in winter and once in spring. So this year, at our May Coffee House, we're still planning it, but we plan to invite Central students over to perform and to attend. Yeah, it's basically all that part.
One of the big things that we have planned for May is the scavenger hunt and friendship bench. So as Ms. Lemare was saying earlier, today, Link Crew wrote some postcards for Robert Bateman students. They will see them, and they'll essentially determine what group they will be in for the scavenger hunt. So in May, they will be invited over for a scavenger hunt, as well as a friendship bench unveiling. So the Friendship Bench is an organization in Burlington that promotes mental health. So we are having the father of, who started the foundation, come and speak to Robert Bateman and Burlington Central students. And the event will be, overall, educating students about mental health and encouraging peer-to-peer conversations between students at Central and Bateman.
We also want to implement an IB mentoring program because at the moment, the IB students in Bateman are grade 10s and 11s that are going over to Central. And the students at Central are grade nine pre-IB students. So when I first came to the pre-IB program, I had 12th graders and 11th graders that I could look up to and ask for advice, who are also, who had also gone through the same thing. Right now, in Central, those grade nines, we want to offer them some, a hand, a helping hand, because we had those mentors, and we want to be those mentors for the students who want someone to talk to. So linking that back to the postcards, as Central students will be sending Bateman students, incoming Bateman students, postcards. The IB students that are gonna be going over to Central want to send postcards to the ALP students, just with a couple IB tips, or, you know, linking our social media, ask us any questions if you have any, basic stuff like that. Yes, the bus passes. So I don't have much information on this right now, but I do know that the grade eleven IB, the current grade eleven IB students, myself included, are getting bus passes because transportation seemed to be a little bit of a concern, because a lot of IB students are coming from all around the city. So with free bus passes, we'll be able to get to school much easier. That's currently in implementation right now. I just checked off a form that said I need a bus pass. That's the information I have there.
And tying to the scavenger hunt and the friendship bench, we, Central is providing some, the IB students with some Burlington Central swag. So when they come to the new school, they'll already have some spirit wear to wear on the school. And finally, I'm working with Ms. Chuby, the Department Head for Math and English. We hope to meet with some IB students to prep for the upcoming math contests, such as the Houghton Math Contest, which is a team event, as well as the Waterloo Math Contest. So we are looking towards preparing for that contest and possibly even running it together.
Uma and Michael. And so a quick snapshot by the numbers, our grade nine enrollment for the upcoming 2020 and 2021 school year, we have fifty-three and counting. We are still accepting applications for round two. This past year, so this current school year, we have fifty-three grade nine ALP students compared to the last two years of forty-three and fifty-six. As a progress check, how well are we doing in terms of retaining? Eighty out of eighty-five students at RBHS and Robert Bateman are transitioning and planning to come to Burlington Central. We're pretty, pretty pleased about that. I'd like to give you a quick update as well in terms of the, the work that we're doing with our staff to prepare for the program move to Burlington Central. As mentioned, Jennifer Bright, our IB coordinator, is an integral part of the program, and she continues to be, she sits in our leadership team meetings and is an important part of our conversations and decision-making. The, the principal at Robert Bateman, Mark Dooley, myself and Jen, we meet monthly to touch base, to see how things are going and identify any areas that we need to address and plan for upcoming events. IB-trained staff at Robert Bateman participated in two full PD days in the fall, and they came over to Burlington Central for those two days. Meetings were held with new ALP, new ALP students, sorry, teachers at Burlington Central, so that they too can know, understand what the ALP is all about. And there are some projected training opportunities for new and current IB teachers being, that's being organized centrally at the board level. And I think that's it for us.
So I'd like to turn it over to trustees right now, if you have any questions for the guests.
We do have a couple. So Trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you to Principal Lemare. How many of the teachers for IB that are currently at Robert Bateman are moving over to Burlington Central for that familiar face, experience for the students?
So Jennifer Bright, who is our IB coordinator, she spends her time fifty-fifty at the, at the building. We also currently have some staff who are at Bateman, sorry, who are, who were at Bateman, who are already in the building. We've got Dimitri Papadopoulos, Ginger Major, who else is there?
Who's on the integration committee?
Jack Slabota, and they're all there full-time as of this semester. And as we continue with staffing and sectioning processes, that is an important part that we'll be, we'll be looking at, because we need to maintain the program integrity as we move over.
Thank you, that sounds very good. Thank you. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you, through you, I think it's to Michael and Irma, actually. You spoke about two events, the Culture Fusion, which is on March 26th, and the May Coffee House. I'm wondering if visitors are welcome, and if they are, if you can give me times.
I, I will look into that. I think it should be okay. Visitors are definitely welcome for the May Coffee House. Culture Fusion should be okay, but I can email you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Very great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you through the chair to our presenters. Thank you so much for sharing a glimpse of the exciting things that you've provided to both sets of students. It's really varied. I actually even had the opportunity to attend with Trustee Collard, the Lawrence Hill presentation, and just my reflection was, I was so impressed with how everybody collaborated. I didn't know who was a Bateman or Central student. It was, it was very cool how people connected. The level of questions blew my mind. I thought it was at a university lecture. I just was so impressed with the level of engagement that the students had participated in, so it was really, really nice to see. But I have a question for you about the student government's piece, and was just wondering how, if your intention was to actually have these elections take place prior to the school year, or is it, are you waiting till the next school year? Like, what does, what will that look like?
Right, so right now, we actually had a meeting today, so things are, like, they're always changing, because we're, today, one of the students from Bateman asked some other students, had they been, what they thought of the plan? So we did have to make some changes, so we're always open to input from parents, staff and students. Right now, the plan is to have elections for the executive roles, like President, Vice President or Prime Minister, Deputy Prime Minister, in the, before the school year, and then have the general body later in the school year. But we are ensuring that students from Bateman have the opportunity to take leadership roles at Central as well, even coming into another school. So we're just going to, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't, no, no voting can affect the way that they get into Parliament.
Thank you so much for all your efforts.
Okay, there are no more questions, so I know.
So I would like to excuse this group, because they've been waiting patiently, and thank you. And again, I think trustees and staff will see that there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and when we get out of the way and let the students take charge, they, they do a pretty good job, so thank you for coming. So now my challenge is about ten slides in three minutes, how's that? Just very quickly, one of the questions that we've had and items that have been shared in the past are the number of new course offerings for students as a result of any of the PAR work that we've been doing. So you'll see that these course offerings, and you don't need to know what all the course codes are, I think it's the numbers at the bottom, you'll see that there are twenty-one courses for students that are currently at Robert Bateman in grade ten that will have new offerings that wouldn't have been offered last at, at Robert Bateman. I do not have Central's numbers, because last year, Central started to have more offerings with the increase in number of students, so they had a big boost last year. This is a quick shot of student government, the three schools meeting together. So we talked a little bit about Burlington Central and Bateman, but there's a lot of work, and you'll see that the results in the dance, over five hundred kids, that was planned by students in all three schools. Again, more courses for students, and here where, on the left, you'll see the number of courses for students that are currently at Bateman, that these course offerings would be new to them as well. On the right-hand side, you'll see students that are at Nelson, they now have new course offerings to choose from for next year as well. And they had, most recently in February, they had a club fair similar to the event that they were just sharing with the students. This was set up by both schools, Bateman and Nelson, and boost set up by both student groups to show what are the opportunities available and what are the new opportunities beyond just courses. Robert Bateman closing celebrations, there'll be more information posted at the Robert Bateman website, but please save the date for those of you that are interested, June 12th, 2020, and there's a great day planned. I'll be able to share, actually, Principal Dooley will be at our May update, and he'll be able to share all the details, but it will be posted shortly. So if you're on Twitter, it's @BatemanHS. In terms of the facilities pieces, just an update for trustees, I know that you're aware that there was conversations around the outdoor learning space at Nelson. You were, you had seen these pictures for Phase One. We had some people come and provide some input to us. Superintendent Zahnfeld has been to CAC. We've had, Student Services Department has met with staff and we're talking, the EAs were able to go over to Nelson on, I think it was the February fourteenth PD day, and then the teaching staff has also been over. We have parent meetings, we've had one parent meeting, there's another one upcoming, there are community partner input, and, and lastly, there'll be some input from students that will be using the space. At the next meeting, we'll be able to share some more design pieces, but right now, some of the concerns that have been brought forward through the community are being addressed, and a revised plan will be shared, a Phase Two plan, so that's exciting. This is Nelson. The CPP area is almost ready for paint, apparently. It is, it is getting close. I, I'm joking, it's not paint yet, but it's the, on the right-hand side, you'll see that that is the EA staff from Robert Bateman coming to see the spaces. One of the things that they really enjoyed was seeing the light in all of the rooms that are in, in that area. There's a lot of construction been done, and there's tons of light, and they can start to visualize some of the spaces, and there were some adjustments made, actually, based on the input that they had with that visit. And then the library and cafeteria footings are underway, so there was lots of great stuff happening there. MM Robinson, they are painting, and then this is a new, you'll see the front of the school, the windows are in, they're just finishing up, they're hoping for occupancy just post market break. And I stem a couple of opportunities that they've had recently, through McMaster and Mohawk have just occurred, and there are some work that, some more opportunities for students to show and showcase some of the learning that they're doing over the next few months. We do have new parents and students coming into the program, so there'll be obviously some work in welcoming them into the building as well. Just a quick timeline for you to see what's happening. I'd be happy to take any questions, I know it's a long presentation.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. As usual, I want to know a little bit more about the construction. When will the CPP area be ready for students to visit and acquaint themselves with the layout and become familiar and comfortable with it?
So through the chair to Trustee Collard, the area itself is scheduled for June 1st. They will probably be over to see the outdoor space prior to that, to have input into the Phase Two design. And also, there are other opportunities, right now, the grade twelve leadership class is working, the Nelson leadership class, again, this semester is working with the students, and they've already had some conversations, the principals, about having, rather than always going to Bateman, having the Bateman students come and see other parts of the school and get familiar with that.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you through the chair. In, in the previous presentation by the students, we heard about some of the IB students acquiring a bus pass to get to school, which I thought was great. Is this an ongoing opportunity for all IB students? Is it this, is this a one-off? Can you tell me, or share with us, what, what the, what the reason behind that was? Whether, what the, going forward, what is our approach going to be?
So through the chair to Trustee Reynolds, this is a, as the, as Uma mentioned, it was only the grade eleven students, and the reason that we've offered this for those specific, that specific cohort, you may be aware, or you are aware, that there is no transportation provided for IB, and that's our board policy and our, our practice. The students that are in grade eleven were in Robert Bateman at the time that we were going through the PAR. They were not aware of, when they signed up to go into ALP in grade nine, the school was still open, and they assumed that they would be continuing all four years of program at Robert Bateman. In, in that year, after they completed the first year of their program, we changed so that their, their course would be finishing up at Burlington Central. Students that entered after June 2017 knew the decision was already made, so that they would be going to Robert Bateman, understanding that then they would need to move to Burlington Central. So that's the rationale.
Okay, there are no more speakers. Thank you very much, Superintendent Blackwell. Looks like a ton of stuff is going on, and I know I've been over to the MM Robinson Cafeteria, and it's gorgeous, and I understand there's going to be a nice patio there, too, so. Okay. Now we're going to move on. We're up to the consent agenda items. So may I have a mover to discuss? Thank you, Trustee Amos, seconded by Trustee Rocha. Thank you. So I'll put the motion on the floor, be it resolved, that the Houghton District School Board approve the consent agenda action items and receive the information items for March 4th, 2020. Is there any discussion, and would things like to be, if you want to pull anything? Okay, so I know that the portable inspection report needs a bit of an explanation. So Superintendent Puchetti, could you please do that for us? Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair Dravance. I want to give a wee bit of a background, and then I'll turn it over to Superintendent We've asked this to be pulled, because as, as some of the trustees around the table will remember, in a previous board, we used to bring a report monthly on portable inspections, and this board, I don't know if it was this board or the last board, but we brought up a recommendation that monthly was excessive, and we had asked that it be brought, I believe, twice a year or once a year. And so that's why we are where we're there. We are recommending another change, and then a further change that I'll talk about after, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Puchetti as to why we're recommending this other one in the AP.
Thank you, through the chair, Director Miller, thank you. So the annual portable prevention, preventative maintenance inspection report, which is before you, we would like to recommend that we not bring this report to the board, but that we will continue to post the inspection reports on our website, and we will make a change to the administration procedure, which currently states that we're going to inspect the portables twice a year, that we will in fact be inspecting them four times a year. My understanding is that in the past, the board used to inspect the portables six times a year, and that maybe is a little bit too much, but two times a year is not enough, not sufficient. And we saw that, because we did have increased incidence of water infiltration in 2019. I will say also that 2019, we had sixty-five millimeters more of rain, and 2018 was also a higher amount of rain based on Environment Canada's weather statistical database that you can go to. So it was, it was a wet year last year, and only doing the inspections two times a year, I think negatively impact how quickly we found problems, and if the problems were there, they had a greater risk of turning into a suspect mold incident. So four times a year, we firmly believe is the right amount, and we'll continue to post those inspection reports on the website and follow the communication protocol that we have in the AP, to let the school principal know when there is an incident found in a, in a portable, so.
Director Miller?
And through your chair, Dravance, we will also put in that the local trustee will be made aware if there is an issue with a portable, which is one of the reasons why we're suggesting, we're not going to bring a report all the time, but local trustees will be made aware of any, any specific issues at a portable at one of the schools in their area.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you to Superintendent Puchetti. The report that we used to get itemized each inspection by, and listed all of the portables at each site, will the one that's going to be online do that? at each site, will the one that's going to be online do that?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no more questions or comments about this. So I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor? Trustee Shuttleworth? Okay, thank you. That carries unanimously. Okay. So now we are up to ratification action items. Vice Chair Harrison, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Thank you. Yes, we do. There's one motion as follows. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the matters from private session, March 4th, 2020 regarding negotiations. And I so move.
Is there any discussion at all? Oh, sorry, seconding, thank you. Thank you for seconding that. Trustee Collard, is there any discussion? Nope, seeing none. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are up to action items for March the 4th. We have three this evening. I'd like to draw your attention to item one, which is supposed to be 421. Aldershot French Immersion Boundary Review, Report 20024 on page 19 of your board package. May I have a mover? Yes, thank you, trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Rocha. Okay. I will put the recommendation on the floor and then we can have a discussion. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adjust the boundaries for Aldershot High School French Immersion as outlined in Option 1 as detailed in Report 20024 effective September 2020. Okay, is there any debate? Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question or questions. The first one is with respect to a communication plan. Should this be approved? Is there one? And I guess, what does it entail? And then secondly, what are the cost implications to this?
Thank you, through your chair to trustee Al Harrison. First, the communication plan. We've already communicated to Aldershot School, Grade 7s to 12, and Maplehurst Public School of this boundary review. A communication went home. And myself and trustee Reynolds attended Maplehurst School Council in February. And just last week, sorry, I did that in January, we did that in January. And just last week, trustee Reynolds visited Aldershot High School's School Council. And if it's passed tonight, we have a communication ready to go home for Friday. Go through the Communication Department and it'll be sent home to, actually, we're going to send this communication home to all five schools in the Aldershot area. Because even though they're in Grade 1 or kindergarten, they may as well know that if they're making a decision for French immersion, when they enter French immersion in Grade 2, their high school will be Burlington Central High School. So we're going to send that communication home to all the feeder schools in the Aldershot area. And in terms of cost implications, we don't think there are any. We have some kids that are bussed to Aldershot High School already. And so really, we'll probably be, it's probably going to be a wash. We won't be bussing kids to Aldershot, we'll be bussing kids to Burlington Central. And certainly, you know, the kids who live north of the QE Tandega, they're being, they're bussed to Aldershot right now. So they'll be redirected to Burlington Central. So we don't anticipate any costs. Burlington Central already has a very viable French immersion program. So in terms of resources, the staffing will be just adjusted accordingly.
Okay, great. Seeing no other speakers on the speakers list. So I'm going to set up the vote and call on the question. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next, I'd like to draw your attention to item two on the action items list. Number 422, Acton Boundary Report. Report 20022, revised on page 24 of your board package. And that is moved by trustee Reynolds.
Gray.
Oh, trustee Gray. And then seconded by trustee Reynolds. Okay, thank you. I will read the recommendation. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adjusts the grade configurations for the elementary schools in ERA 126, McKenzie Smith Bennett Public School, and Robert Little Public School, and SRA 107, Acton District High School, as outlined in Option 1 and detailed in Report 20022. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adjusts the grade configurations for the elementary schools in ERA 126, McKenzie Smith Bennett Public School, and Robert Little Public School, and SRA 107, Acton District High School, as outlined in Option 1 and detailed in Report 20022, whereby the grade configuration for Robert Little takes effect for September 2020. And the grade configurations for McKenzie Smith Bennett Public School and Acton District High School take effect for September 2021. Trustee Gray, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to share my position this evening, which has been guided and informed by attending and listening to the deliberations, deliberations, rather, in the BRC meetings that took place from November through January. My position has also been informed by reviewing the comments and questions asked by community members through the FAQ pages on the board's website, also by reviewing the results of the Public Information Feedback Survey and an additional community-led survey that was sent to me, along with the correspondence that I have received from parents in the Acton community. Also, my opinion has been informed by a review of the current research that has been completed on grade configuration. And finally, by the discussions I have had with principals, some teachers, and superintendents. As the trustee for Halton Hills, I seek to represent the views of my community and make decisions which are best for student achievement and success. While the recommendation before you this evening is not supported by all members of the Acton community, I nevertheless will support this recommendation for the following five reasons. Number one, it creates two, two schools, Robert Little and M. McKenzie Smith Bennett, with a primary junior focus in Acton, and one school with an intermediate senior focus. All three schools now will have an improved projected utilization rate. Second reason is that it reduces the number of transitions for students from Robert Little. Research has revealed that the reduction of school-to-school transitions is correlated with improvement in student achievement. Thirdly, it increases the grade span at Acton District High School. Yes, some studies have found that schools with more grade levels per building, example, Grade 7 to Grade 12, evidence not only higher academic achievement, but also better attendance rate, increase in self-esteem, and attitudes towards school with fewer suspension and behavior problems. The fourth reason is having schools with longer grade spans allows for more collaboration among teachers across grade levels, as well as better alignment of curriculum across grades. This will be a clear benefit in a Grade 7 to 12 school. And as a result, student retention will be increased, leading to richer course offerings from Grades 9 to 12. And finally, the fifth reason is that should this recommendation in this report be approved tonight, the safety concerns raised from members of the community regarding the entry into high school settings at a younger age can and will be mitigated by the organizational plan developed specifically for the new grade configuration at Acton District High School. This plan will be developed through the work of the Integration Committee, which will have parents, students, teachers, and administrators sitting on it. I am convinced that the concerns expressed by the community members will be more than adequately addressed through the work of this team. And so, in conclusion, I support the recommendation in this report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chair Harrison?
Thank you very much. I have, and I think we've all received a letter also from a member of the community. So I was grateful to receive that. And it was expressing support. So for the reasons outlined by trustee Gray in the report and in that letter, I will be supporting this. But I just have a couple of clarification questions first. And they're really similar to what I asked the last, for the last report. And that is, is there a communications plan ready to go? And if not, what, what's the approach there? What's the plan? I'm interested in how this is going to be monitored. And then lastly, about cost implications, if any.
Thank you. Through the chair to the vice chair. We can, certainly, the communication plan will go out if the vote goes through here tonight to all three impacted Acton schools, informing of that. The real communication work will be done through the Integration Committee and regularly reporting, because that's a year removed from now. So the bulk of the communications will roll out next year as the committee gets into the work. And again, with the three communities, we'll keep all of them involved in it because all Acton students will eventually, our goal is all Acton students will eventually roll through Acton High School. So we will communicate at certain milestones when the work of the Integration Committee, which will be all of the details that people really want to know. So it'll be two phases. It'll be an immediate communication, but the real detailed work will roll through. Right now, immediately, the Robert Little piece, they're staying within the existing school for another year. This is very popular with the Robert Little community and will be well-received. So there's not a great deal of communications beyond it's approved. And the Fives are staying here next year for Grade 6. And in terms of costs, we don't anticipate any transportation. Next year, we run projections, it'll be about 20 more kids receiving transportation. But it also could be 20 fewer next year, just depending on where families are living. It should be, it should be close to a wash in terms of transportation. Facility costs in terms of Acton High, it may be a little short on lockers. But other than that, the rooms are all ready to receive Grade 7 and 8 students. We don't see a lot of facility costs at all.
Thank you. And the third part of the question was just with respect to monitoring. I would be, I don't know if there are any other scenarios in the board that are like this. It seems to be a bit unique, but maybe not. I just wonder about monitoring. It would be great to hear, you know, in 2021 or whenever appropriate timing is how it all goes.
We'll be very interested in monitoring. We entered this process messaging that we think there'll be better outcomes for kids, social, emotional outcomes, and academic, both. So we're in a good position to monitor those and report back around that Acton family of schools because the metrics are fairly common to us. We're hoping to see improved learning results out of the schools. So we'll certainly be monitoring its data readily available from the well-being portfolios as well as the academics. So we can bring that back to board if you wish. But we know within the schools themselves, the school councils readily share that information already with their councils and broadly to the communities.
Okay, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the chair. I will be supporting this motion. And if my fellow trustees also agree, I would just share with the community those who are, I want to say, concerned about what this is going to look like, that they have an opportunity to help craft what this, with this, with this school integration committee. I hope that they get involved with that committee so that they can impact perhaps extracurriculars, school programming, facility concerns. That is the opportunity to share your concerns. So I hope that you commit to being a part of this change so that you can, it can really reflect a piece of the Acton spirit. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the speakers list, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The boundary, new boundaries will begin next year for Robert Little and the year after for McKenzie Smith Bennett and Acton High School, Acton District. Okay, I'd now like to draw your attention to item three on our action list this evening. Audit Committee, Appointment of External Editor, Report 20030 on page 32 of your board package. Trustee Reynolds, you'd like to move this? And seconded by trustee Collard? Okay, trustee Gray, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much. As you can see through the recommendation, it's fairly clear that, again, the Audit Committee has reviewed the performance of the external auditor and have been satisfied with Deloitte's performance. And so is recommending to the Board of Trustees to authorize the appointment for one more year. In fact, Deloitte is in a five-year contract and this would represent year four of that five-year contract. And so that's simply stated, that's the reasoning behind this motion appearing before you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put the motion on the floor. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board of Trustees authorize the appointment of the external audit firm Deloitte LLP to perform the annual financial statement audit of the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Is there any debate? Vice Chair Al Harrison?
Thank you. My apologies here, everyone, for being on a roll. Through you, Madam Chair, my question is, I wonder whether an amendment to the motion that includes something about the cost, either A, option A, at a cost as reflected in the report, or option B, at a cost not to exceed 67,500 plus HST, which is the amount that is reflected in the report. Just because I think it's a good idea. I know the timing will fall in line with the regular cycle, but just to have motions that include all of the relevant information, cost included.
Are you, are you suggesting one over the other? Staff? Superintendent Nagoy, you have a comment on this?
Certainly, through you, Madam Chair. We can absolutely include the cost. It is in agreement with our five-year contract. And each year has an amount that has been stated. Including it in the motion is not a concern.
Is there a preferable, preferable way to state it in the motion? Is there a preferable, preferable way to state it in the motion?
I suppose the number is preferred then. Somebody doesn't have to drill down to the report and find it.
That sounds good. So we have a motion to amend and put the C amount again, since it's... Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the motion to add at a cost not to exceed $67,500 plus HST. Okay, we, how about, does anybody have any comments or debate on that? Okay, that is not in our system. So I'm just, can I have just a raise of hands to accept this amendment? Trustee Oliver, are you okay with adding? Yes, okay. So that is unanimous? If...
I'm in agreement.
Okay, good. So that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. So now going back to the motion and any debate, any further debate on this at all? No? Okay, then I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the amended motion? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are now up to 5.0, Communications to the Board. First off is item 5.1, which is the Student Trustee Report. Trustee Burns, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. So greetings and good evening, everyone. The past two weeks have been very eventful for Trustee Lau and myself, so I'll get right into this meeting's report. First off, Trustee Lau and I attended the BCC Conference in Ottawa from the 21st to the 23rd of February, hosted by the Ontario Student Trustees Association. During the event, Trustee Lau and I were able to meet with a range of student trustees representing boards from all across Ontario, though we had a focus on talking to student trustees from the Golden Horseshoe region. This regional focus allowed us to speak with student trustees from boards similar to Halton. And we will be maintaining these productive conversations and these positive connections as we move throughout the year. Second, the Student Amalgamation Committee has continued their meetings with the goal of finalizing an application process for students from Robert Bateman who wish to be a part of the student councils of Burlington Central or Nelson High School next year. Using feedback from the principals of Burlington Central and Robert Bateman, as well as the vice principal of Nelson, student representatives from each of the three schools have completed the development of an application process for every interested student for non-executive positions, regardless of the school they attend this year. This system will allow for applications from Robert Bateman to be evaluated at the same time as applications from Burlington Central or Nelson High School respectively. This ensures that these applications will not be judged into separate criteria for these different students and allow for the student representation from both schools to be as equal as possible while simultaneously maintaining a meritocratic system. Moving forward, these students will begin to present this application process to students at each of these three schools while finalizing an interim constitution for next year. And lastly, but certainly not least, last Tuesday, February 25th, Trustee Lau and I hosted the elections for the 2020-2021 student trustees. Right up until election night, the competition was extremely close, as our 17 candidates were each incredibly strong contenders. After a four-minute speech in front of the Student Senate alongside some board staff and trustees, the competition was still anyone's game. Once the voting period ended, it was revealed that we had more votes in this election cycle than we have ever had before. 1,257 students cast their vote to decide their next representatives. Throughout all of the speeches, some of the common themes included mental health supports, a climate crisis declaration, and a larger number of opportunities for students boardwide. After all that campaigning and excellent maintenance of the electronic election system by our fantastic IT crew, we have the results. The student trustees for the 2020-2021 school year are Vandy Widyalankara from White Oaks and Evan Taylor from Milton District. Yes. And in case those of you who did not know, this is Vandy in attendance tonight. So in the coming months, Trustee Lau and I will do our very best to ensure that the student trustee elects will be as prepared as possible for when they assume their roles next year. To those who have helped Trustee Lau and I organize the election, those that have mentored us in setting it up, and for those who attended to show their support for student voice, and everyone else who has in some way supported us up till this point this year, Trustee Lau and I extend our very deepest thanks. I will now accept any questions that the board may have.
Trustee Shuttlesworth.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. To Trustee Burns, I have, I think, two questions. First off, this election was a lot earlier than your election was last year. So what sort of, I don't know, onboarding do you have planned with the incoming student trustees?
Through the chair to Trustee Shuttlesworth. At the moment, our plan going forwards is to make sure that the student trustee elects are aware of how their role in the HGSP will work in terms of what is common practice for student trustees this year, for Trustee Lau and myself, regarding private session, public session, the expectations regarding student trustee reports, et cetera, while also making sure that they are present in Student Senate meetings going forwards so that both of the student trustee elects are aware how Senate operates on an administrative level and also how student senators approach student trustees for assistance and providing this opinion to student trustees to bring forward to the board. At the same time, we are also prepared to bring these two student trustee elects to the Ontario Student Trustees Association Annual General Meeting, which is taking place in May this year, as also happened last year. So that will introduce the student trustees to the three main responsibilities of an HGSP student trustee. Well, this extra time will give us enough time to specifically make sure that they understand every aspect there is about their roles in the future.
And then my second question, which is a little bit different, which is concerning the amalgamation you spoke about, about the student reps from Robert Bateman who are coming to both Nelson and Central. Are you talking about the student council or the Senate?
So the committee that has been meeting together in the Burlington Room every few Tuesdays over the past few months is comprised of a number of student representatives, some of them being from Student Senate and some of them being from student councils from the three affected high schools. This committee will probably, though I do not have definitive, a definitive answer to that question, I will say that it is very likely that the students who will be presenting the different, or the student council application process will be from the schools that they are presenting to. So that way, the application process will be received as best as possible, and the students will understand if there are any other students who are concerned about the issue.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I, congratulations on a very well-run election. It was a very exciting night. But that being said, I believe that we do need to have a resolution approving the appointment of Vandy and Evan as student trustees. And I do have that wording, if you would like it, Madam Chair.
That would be great. And if you could also pass it on to Manager Denton?
I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Be resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the appointment of Vandy, and I'm just looking because I want to make sure, pardon? Widyalankara, thank you. And Evan Taylor as student trustees for the Halton District School Board 2020-2021 term. I'd like to move that, please.
And seconded by...
Joanna.
Oh, Joanna. Trustee Oliver, thank you. And is there any discussion at all on that motion? Okay. Now, I don't... Okay, so we are, we're going to do this by hand? Okay, so all those in favor? And that carries unanimously.
Trustee Gray in favor?
Yes, thank you. You're so quiet. Thank you, Trustee Gray. So that does carry unanimously. Congratulations. Okay. So that was a great report, very fulsome. And it sounds like it was, I did watch, unfortunately, not all of it, but it, the speeches I saw were exceptional. So, yeah, lots of great ideas.
I like to know how they're so familiar with the words to Sweet Caroline, about just wasn't odd.
Sweet Caroline is timeless. Okay, moving on. Now we're up to our action items for March 25th, 2020. So sometimes we have items that meet established criteria to come to the board table twice before voting. So we have two items for, that meet those criteria this evening. The first is 521, School Year Calendar, Report 20027 on page 33 of the board package. And we have Superintendent Hunt-Gibbons. And...
Good evening.
Andrew Bigum, thank you.
I will introduce my guest this evening to all of the trustees. Beside me this evening, we have System Administrator, Vice Principal Andrew Bigum, who happens to be the IT School Liaison as well as our e-learning lead. And duties as assigned, Andrew also worked with Associate Director Bogan, chairing the calendar committee. So because David Bogue is absent this evening, Andrew has joined in case there are any questions as to our calendar committee in the report before you. As you will see, it was a large group. There were 24 different people represented, who, on that committee, representing various employee groups, unions, parents, trustees. There was a liaising with the Catholic Board, because we have to agree on all of our dates. And we have to ensure that we are also compliant with the ministry requirements. So Andrew had a big task ahead of him working alongside with Associate Director Bogue. So at this point, if there are any questions, I will defer to Andrew Bigum.
Do we have any questions about the calendar this evening? Oh, Trustee Rocha.
Through the chair. Just for clarification on my end, it says the school calendar has to have a minimum of 194 days. And there's a breakdown between how many we've removed for PD days. Is there some ministry guideline as to how, is there a minimum instructional days?
Through to the chair, Trustee Rocha. As the ed act outlines, there must be between 194 and 196 days, of which the ministry then sends us out a memo and advises us how many of those may be PA days. Three of them are ministry-oriented, and the content of the day is defined by them, and four are given to the boards as optional. So between, as you've seen this calendar, we have 192 days between Labor Day and the end of the year, June 30th. The calendar must fall between September 1st and June 30th. So we have put two additional PA days outside of that, and those are technically counted as instructional days. They also give us the allowance of 10 days for examinations, five per semester in secondary. So with the math there, it works out to be 187 days, of which are considered full instructional while students are in class.
So there are no questions? But I, I just have a, I suppose, question. So the days that students will be in school, there'll be two less PA days that parents will have to potentially find care for their children than this year, sort of looking over at a calendar, because those two PA days come before Labor Day?
That's correct. This is a unique calendar, and we haven't seen this in 10 years. It has happened in the past, but there are two days scheduled before Labor Day. Parents may be in a position that they're still trying to find care. That did come up at the table, right? That camps are still in place, et cetera. But that does mean that they are two of the seven throughout the year. So there are only five occurring throughout the remainder of the year.
And that's unique for this year? Okay.
If I may add, the last time this occurred was 2009, 2010. And a very similar calendar happened in 2015, 2016. But as you will know, 2016 was a leap year, which gave us one extra day to play with.
Okay, that's all very interesting. So there are no more questions? So I guess we'll see this again in two weeks. I mean, on the 25th. Okay, so next we are up to number 522, New School Name. Northeast Oakville Elementary School, Report 20029 on page 37 of your board package. Manager Denton, have you cloned yourself?
I'm everywhere tonight.
Yeah, everywhere.
Good evening, Chair Grabins, trustees of the board. In your package tonight is the board report concerning the suggested names for the new elementary school in Oakville, northeast number two. As you're well aware, we follow a amend procedure in order to gather names for the new school. We do that through suggestion boxes in the neighboring schools as well as an online suggestion form. We had many submissions this year. Once we eliminated some of the inappropriate ones, we got it down to about just around 620 or so names. And that was shared with you before the meeting. On the committee that helped to select the names that have gone forward, of course, are the trustee for the school, Kelly Amos, Chair Grabins herself, Janet Riccadelli, who is the principal for the new school, Superintendent Collet-Rodick, and four parents from Odenawi, representing Odenawi, Palermo, Folgerwood, and River Oaks, who will have children attending the new school when it opens. The names, the shortlisting committee put forward the three names in your report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. One question that I did have before the meeting, and I'll just clarify, the two, the first name on the list is Dr. David R. Williams Public School. And there's a description of why, of his education and accomplishments. And it's there for you to read. The other two names, Preserve Public School and Seven Oaks Public School, are both names that have actually been names from a, that the neighborhood is named after through the developers who have developed the schools in those areas. And Preserve is what the area has been known as. It is mentioned in the secondary, Oakville Secondary Plan, but it is really a marketing name from the developer of the homes in that area. As well, Seven Oaks is also a name from one of the developers. And those are two names that the community refers to that area as. I hope this report helps you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the community for the submission of all the names. It actually made it very tough initially to, when we went through all the names, there were so many deserving people. I would like to thank everybody who was on the committee, because there was a lot of great discussion. And when we pulled out names, we had over 20 that we discussed. But at the end of the discussion, the committee actually, especially the parents on the committee, came down to one name, and that was for the Dr. David R. Williams Public School. Dr. Williams actually lives in Oakville. His children have gone to... His children have gone to our schools. He was an astronaut who went out in space twice and actually holds the Canadian record for longest spacewalks. He was a spacewalk three times. He was an aquanaut. He's a medical doctor and is writing, currently writing, as well as still practicing as a doctor. He's written children's books. So he is quite an accomplished individual. It was explained to the committee, we couldn't just submit one name to trustees. So that's where the other two names were felt to come forward. So anyways, I shared the names at a meeting last night of the Ward Seven community, and the overwhelming feedback was as well that they've supported the Dr. David R. Williams Public School name from the community. So that's the feedback from my community, and I'd like to thank everybody who was involved.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. So I am familiar with Dr. David Williams, not personally, but certainly of his accomplishments. And certainly we can see this is a very, very wonderful individual, well-accomplished Canadian and Ontarian. Having said that, I'm personally more in favor of school names that reflect the local community, a landmark, the neighborhood. So I was pleased to see the other two names presented. A little less happy to hear that they are developers' names. By that, do you mean it's a development company? Or they selected the names for the neighborhood?
The area is known as the Preserve, and that is, I believe, a Madamy home name. Although there are other developers in the area, there's one, another development called Woodland Preserve, and another one called East Preserve. So the word Preserve is one that's common through each of them. But they are all developer names.
And the Seven Oaks as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so in that list of 600 some submissions, were there any other names that would be reflective of the local community or landmarks? I'm personally looking for something more timeless that future generations of students and families will be able to relate to.
Just to let you know that we are limited to the names that are put forth by the committee.
In answer to your question, the list of names was provided to you prior to the meeting so that you had the list of everything that was submitted, barring any of the inappropriate ones.
Okay, Trustee Gray. Trustee Gray.
Wish to understand more about the Reserve.
Trustee Gray, you may want to.
Hello, Trustee Gray here.
You may want to restart what you were saying because we caught you halfway through a sentence.
I must have been on mute, I'm very sorry. Through the chair. My comments are along the lines of Trustee Oliver in that I wanted to know a little bit more, and I guess I'm just understanding now that these two other names, Preserve and Seven Oaks, were identified by the developers. But I'm wondering if, I guess what I'm looking for is, will the community at large, living in that area, connect more to those names? In other words, will they become names that are very, very well-known in the community and very associated with the community, and therefore identifiable by the members of the community, more so than the other individuals' names? So I guess I'd look to Trustee Amos, perhaps, for her view on that.
Preserve is actually a very wide area. Odenawi is as well, is actually called the Preserve. Seven Oaks is just the name that, an area over in that section is called that the developer has named it. And just so you're aware, the community, I have put all those names out to them, and they have come back overwhelmingly in favor of the Dr. David R. Williams School. So that's what the community is saying they would like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Shuttleworth.
Hi, yes, thank you. Through the chair, again to Trustee Amos. I quite like the personal touch of a name. I think it's quite nice. I just kind of think of our other schools that we have that are named after people versus places. So Chris Hatfield, Craig Kilburger. And I just think that, in my opinion, and has more of a personal ring to it. My question is, this was the name that it resounded most with the community, correct? That's, okay. Was, sort of resounded most. It was the one that was most in favor of anyone else. Were there any other sort of?
In the discussion with the committee, that was the name that came forward as the name that they picked, but then we told them they had to have other names as well. So, and part of it was, they were very excited about, a school culture is built around the name, and the opportunities of creating a STEM or STEAM school because of the person who is being named and the other pieces of that. And the fact that there could be a connection with the school, like there has been with Chris Hatfield, like there has been with Dr. Frank Hayden and all those kinds of things. So that was part of what was also exciting to them.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Having been through a naming process for a school, I have to say, when the community overwhelmingly wants a name, that I will always support what the community wants because it's their school. And so I'm very happy to support the name that's been put forward by the community.
There's no other speakers on the speakers list, so I'll pipe in. Having experienced Dr. Frank J. Hayden's school and how incredibly involved he is with the school and how the students look up to him and truly see him as a mentor, and he's truly welcomed within the school as part of the community. I do see a value in having a person, even though it can go badly. I mean, we've seen in the other, in the other board recently, Jean Vanier. You know, things can go badly. But I don't think that we should negate every person because there are some bad apples out there. I think that there are inspiring people out there, and I think that a way for us to inspire our students is to hold some of these people up and say, hey, look what you can do. So that's all I have to say. Vice Chair L. Harrison.
Thanks, through you, Madam Chair. Just some last-minute thoughts. Related to the note in the report that says, as its board practice, the communications department made contact with Dr. Williams, and he's honored to have his name considered for the new school. So in that regard, I would imagine he's still living locally then. And I wonder if a conversation, part of that conversation talked about how Dr. Hayden, for example, and Craig Kilburger have become involved in the culture of that school. Because for me, more than his accomplishments, I guess it's the values that he likely holds in his life that I think will be really instructive to the students and to building a positive culture. So I just wonder, beyond his willingness to let his name stand, was he asked about his willingness to be involved in the life of the school?
No, we had not talked to him about that. We have only emailed with him, and he indicated very positively that he would be happy to have his name on the school. And he gave us his preference, which is in the report in terms of the name. But we haven't had any conversations about what that role would possibly be in the future if the name goes forward.
Trustee Amos.
In response to Vice Chair L. Harrison, when Dr. Williams' child was at one of the local schools, the family was very supportive and for the school and did things. So I can only imagine that they would want to be supportive of a school with their name on it.
Director Miller.
Through your chair, Gribbins, to Vice Chair L. Harrison. We would have that conversation after some sort of naming process. We would not have it prior to because we don't want it to appear like it's a tryout to see who, you know, person best fitted. So that conversation, and I know with Dr. Frank Hayden, the conversation occurred after. With Darth Web, the conversation occurred after the school was named. And so they were, in those two cases, they were both very receptive to being involved in the school, and were, and Frank and Dr. Hayden still is, as a matter of fact. So that's, it's an excellent question, but it's not one that we would have prior to the naming.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the speakers list. Thank you very much. And I will give you a moment to get back so that you can continue taking minutes. Okay, so we have one information item for this evening, and that is 531 Environmental Benchmarks. Superintendent Pachetti and Suzanne Burwell, report 20028 on, on page 39 of your board package. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, trustees. And thank you very much for the opportunity to put together this report. It's, you know, it's not just about reducing paper in our schools. It's about changing the way we think about that resource in our schools. So our goal is to come back with a report that provides you with some measures that can be, or rather, some initiatives that can be measured that in turn would become part of perhaps the multi-year plan in terms of the operational aspects of the plan. And to show that interconnection between many of the measures. We don't do things in isolation. We work together, and I think that's also a very important awareness piece about a lot of the environmental sustainability work that happens in Halton, in this community, and we are part of this community. And we do work with other community organizations and our municipal partners as well on these kinds of initiatives. So Suzanne put a little PowerPoint together that just touches on some of the highlights that are in the report, and we can just talk about them very briefly and then answer any questions you might have. Okay, so I'm speaking about buildings and grounds. Just to say that, as I mentioned, we don't do things in isolation. When we do new schools or when we do projects to retrofit schools, obviously, one of our big goals is to make the buildings as energy-efficient as possible. But we also know that the people that occupy that building have a role to play in making it energy-efficient. And we also know that there's a lot that we can teach our students and future generations about how buildings can be more energy-efficient, carbon-neutral. And in terms of the work we do on our sites, it's not only about providing learning opportunities, outdoor learning opportunities, but I think the thing that students today and, and in general, that we are talking about making our sites more resilient. So the traditional pave, you know, pave the parking lot, pave the schoolyard, put a few trees around the perimeter of the site, that's not enough of a response anymore. So just to say, when we do these projects, it is very much about, what is that coming from? Ah, okay. Thought it was some sort of a warning. Two minutes, get her off the stage. So that's something that we talk about in the report about buildings and the work that we do, both buildings and grounds. Yes. Thank you. All right. Been a long day. Cannot create, right. So when we go to create a baseline for energy or energy targets for schools, it's actually quite a complicated process from a technical point of view in terms of how you measure the energy. You can't compare a building that was built in 1960 to a building that was built in 2000. You might be surprised to know that usually the building from 1960 uses less energy than the building from 2000 because it has less bells and whistles, no mechanical ventilation, et cetera. So when we create baseline for energy, we've got to take these kinds of factors into account. It's, you're not comparing apples to apples when it comes to a building portfolio like ours.
So the second area that we started looking at was travel and traffic. And again, looking at what we can evaluate on our, with respect to our schools, it's not so difficult to figure out which students fall within the transported and the non-transported zones. However, when we're looking at the impact of school travel patterns on the community, the students, the neighborhoods, the air quality, all those other sorts of things, we even need to be understanding what's happening at the exact, what's actually happening at the site. Because as we all know, some of those walkers aren't walking, and some of those bus students aren't on the bus either. So when we start building those relationships with our community that Superintendent Pachetti talked about, we need to understand that they're going to help us solve some of those barriers to getting kids using those active and sustainable modes of transportation. We still have issues because when we look at transportation hierarchies and how we are looking at our sites, are we starting with pedestrian first, followed by active mobility, followed by public transit, followed by private vehicles? Or are we, with the incurred, with our municipalities, what reigns supreme on that hierarchy? So those are some of the things that sort of make it interesting to look at. At first thing, you think, well, I can certainly count that, but really, are we getting a true picture? Looking at providing active and sustainable transportation plans, education programs, tying it into curriculum. Those are all things that can be evaluated and, you know, impact on how students are actually getting to school. The next area that we talked about before was procurement and waste. And when we look at carbon sort of footprints of organizations, often we look at transportation and buildings as being the two big ones. But if we pull the transportation out and say, well, we're not just looking at how students and staff are getting to the school, we're looking at that, the impact of transportation on our procurement practices. All of a sudden, procurement becomes much, much higher when we start looking at the carbon impact of what we're buying, where it's coming from, how it is manufactured, and how we're dealing with it, which ties into the waste. As we talked about before, we can set up systems within our schools to deal with waste, but we still need the occupant buying. We need the students and the staff to be participating in those systems. So if you look at, in the report, we say that we were one of the first school boards in Ontario to have an organics collection program in all of our schools. I will tell you, it operates better in some schools than others. Why does that happen? It's directly related to who's there and sort of the culture that's going on. Another huge impact that we're seeing more at our high schools, but certainly at some of our elementary schools too, I believe, is the rise of Uber Eats. And the fact that food is now coming into our schools with waste. And we are dealing with the waste that is coming into our schools, which again impacts the carbon footprint of the school because we have single meals being delivered to our schools. You know, at least with Pizza Day, one person brings 125 pizzas. schools. You know, at least with Pizza Day, one person brings 125 pizzas, as opposed to McDonald's for one or two. Students are, are questioning how we use the resources within the school board. One is paper. Paper is always a big question. We should use less paper. Can we do this? Can we do that? Can we do without it? I don't think we can do without it, maybe a little less of it. We've made great strides in how much paper we use within the board over the past 10 years. We've shifted what type of paper we buy, you know, and sometimes the perception is that we should be buying only recycled paper. Recycled paper is much more expensive. The reasons it's more expensive is that the feedstock for recycled paper is contaminated because we're not so great at that diversion piece. So there's lots of pieces that move it around that make it difficult to just take that on. A really big part of what we're doing is the partnerships that the school board works with. We're on the leadership team at the Halton Climate Collective, which works with all four of our municipalities, the region, University of Waterloo, the other school board, Conservation Halton. We saw last week with the Oakville Energy Task Force, they, they passed some climate actions, a community energy plan that they're putting forward. All of the municipalities and the region have climate emergencies. They're working towards action plans, and they're asking us to be involved. We have a lot of buildings, and we have a lot of stakeholders that, they live with us, but they live other places too.
So one of the things we, we've talked about is if an organization is going to embrace and promote environmental awareness and, and increase sustainability, you need to look at it from an organizational point of view. And our tools are also our policy and procedures. So we have currently admin procedures that tackle head-on some of the environmental measures that are talked about in this report. And there may be others that we need to add as we go through developing some measures and baseline. So just to say that it's not just what happens in schools, it's what happens in the organization as well.
So a big part of the resolution that came forward was looking at student engagement. And we went to the Student Senate in December, and we talked about the initiatives that the board is undertaking right now. But we also asked them a few questions, and I realized that this sample size is pretty small. But you got to start somewhere. So one of the first things that we asked them was, how are they taking action on, you know, climate change and environmental initiatives? And a lot, the biggest portion was personal action, which is great, followed by EcoSchools and Generation Green. And the interesting thing about both EcoSchools and Generation Green is they both provide a framework for action for students. EcoSchools is a program that's been around for, I think it's over 15 years now. You certify, it's a recognition, it involves both student action leadership, as well as what's being taught in the classroom, bringing it in. Generation Green, the students came together, they learned about how they take action, provided them with the toolkit to take action, and then it taught them how to measure the impact of what they were doing. So those are, are the ways that our students have been sort of engaging with, with climate action. I also asked them the question, what climate action meant to them. And this is, this was done with Minty Meter, which, okay, nobody gave their name or password, so I, I'm hoping I'm okay. The more frequent the word, the bigger it is, or the darker it is. So you see initiative, sustainable change, urgent, and action. What's also interesting is the words that are smaller that students put in there. And they're looking at things like entrepreneurship, peace, no poverty, power, unity, collaboration, and cooperation. But they're also talking about depression, danger, and, and the fight. So they don't view climate change action just as one aspect of, of, you know, what's happening. They're not looking just at waste, although it's something that they look at. They're seeing the bigger picture of what's going on in their communities. So we, I also asked them, just curious, what do you think we should be doing as a board? And, you know, I had 87 different answers from 49 people, sort of thing. And a lot of it was about asking us to provide more awareness, more assemblies, talk to them about what's really happening, and how they can take action. The next, next most common was that they asked us to work with them, to be aware of what supports student initiatives, to work alongside them, to help us identify where they can become involved. And, you know, it was things like, well, can you help us learn how to divert waste properly? Can you help us, you know, we'd like to be involved in planting trees? Not all of it was things that they thought should be occurring on school boards, but just connecting again to that, that community. The third one was decreasing waste, from diverting it to purchasing, you know, single-use plastic, paper reduction, those kind of things. And at the end, there was quite a few student senators who put forth the piece about climate emergencies. In the, and it was more like, we need to be, people need to know what we're doing and, and make it visible. And I think we see that sometimes where, especially in the community, people say, well, the board doesn't, you know, do they have a plan? And, you know, you should really get some solar panels on some of your schools. We do, but we just don't have people on the roofs to see them. So that was kind of where we went along. The last area was sort of teaching and learning. And I did ask the students, and this is, okay, small sample in December, where had they learned about climate change this year? So from September to December. And they had it certainly indicated that it was science and geography. There were other areas and lots of options, but I guess this is where we.
Through your chair, Drew Vance, to all trustees, at this point, I know this report is about determining baselines as to where we are for environmental action and sustainability and so on. But we thought it was also important that trustees hear small, a brief synopsis on the curriculum aspects of what students study in the, in, around the environment and sustainable actions and climate change and so on. So I've asked Superintendent Solmanian and Superintendent Hunt Dibbons to give a brief from both elementary and secondary perspective.
Through the chair to all the trustees, yes, certainly right from kindergarten through to grade eight in the elementary curriculum, we see the, in environmental sustainability education throughout multiple curriculum areas, mostly in social science, in the strand, people in the environment, for our students from grade one to six, as well as throughout the science curriculum. And so it doesn't surprise me that those are the two big words that the kids have given you because that is where they would learn this. There's also a document from the ministry called Environmental Education, and it was put out in 2009. So it is, you know, getting older. But in that document, it does look at curriculum expectations across the curriculum, including the arts, in different places where teachers can do some of this, this teaching outside of science and geography.
Thank you. Through the chair to the trustees, I would just add to that, that in high school, it's a little different in that of the 30 credits that students are taking, one need only take the one grade nine compulsory geography to fulfill the graduation requirement, and science at nine and 10 is compulsory, and then even the third science can be substituted by a technology or other credit. And so similar to an elementary, we see this within the strands of both science and geography. We also see it, especially through issues education in, in courses such as like, as civics, and as students reported in some of the business courses, et cetera, largely when they're doing project or problem-based learning or inquiry-based learning and looking at particular issues. The First Nations Métis-Inuit curriculum also has strands that attach very clearly to the climate as well. But again, because so many of your credits in high school are optional, and you're allowed to choose, whether or not a student would say that they've had exposure to this will depend on what courses they have selected over their high school career.
So that's really a summary of, of what we're presenting in terms of the initiatives we currently have in place. And as I said, our intention is to come back in the fall with some framework for initiatives or measures, baseline actions that can then be measured over the next little while. We're proposing that we would do that as a staff-led committee to develop those measures because some of them are quite technical. And then we would go to the environment management team that we currently have in place, which has representatives from all different groups for their input before we bring this back to trustees. So happy to answer any questions.
We have a speakers list. Trustee Oliver?
Thank you. Through your chair to our presenters, thank you for this report, very comprehensive summary of all the initiatives. Clearly, HDSB has been a leader in this area, having initiated some firsts in, in our province, and, and also being very closely linked to a number of external initiatives, which is great to see. I know this is a very important issue to, to our student trustees and our HDSB student body, as evidenced by the work of the Senate and the individual efforts that the senators undertake in their own schools. So I see this as a great opportunity, and I look forward to collaborating with our student trustees and the Senate and, and the environmental committee in, in supporting our students in, in various school initiatives to, to further move forward environmental sustainability and stewardship in, in our province and country. Thank you.
Trustee Amos?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you very much for this report. I think this is really important. We need to be sharing with our communities, our students and staff, what we are doing. And I think this is a great place. We need to make this information known that, because we do have people asking what we're doing, and we're doing a lot, but we don't, no one knows, right? So I think this is a great first step. And I, and I really believe that with us going to be including part of this in our multi-year plan, and with the task force that you're looking at creating, and what, and the next steps that I know that Student Senate is going to be looking at and other pieces, I think that this will be the foundation of what we are already doing, and I know that we're going to be doing more and more. So I'd really like to see some vehicle for we, us to be able to share this information, though, with our communities, because I think we need to share the great things we're doing. Like, and as trustee Oliver said, some of us are firsts, and the things that we're doing with our community, part, as community partners, are also great things that we need to be sharing. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Amos. And I forgot, and I don't know why, but to mention that the Director's Cut Number Four, I believe it is, is coming out tomorrow. And it actually is on all the environmental initiatives that are talked about in this report. So it's, you'll have an opportunity to, to reference that when speaking with the community. And the other thing that we've been working on now is that we don't really have a great presence on our website, on H, HDSB. And we've been working with communications to create a, a more fulsome environmental webpage that will have lots of information on it as well, and we'll feed more into that as we develop some of the measures from this report. So thank you.
Well, thank you. That's very exciting, and I look forward to seeing the Director's Cut.
Director Miller?
And through your chair, Drew Vance, to trustee Amos, it would be our intention, once the goals are established and the actions are established, that we would have a communication plan along with that, so it'll be widely known to the public what our baseline is and what we're intending to do. And I, I, I don't want to preempt our four-year strategic plan, but it seems likely that there'll be an environmental aspect to our next four-year strategic plan.
Trustee Collard?
Thank you. Through you to Superintendent Pachetti and Mrs. Burwell. I've always looked forward to your environmental reports. They've always been inspiring, trying to make us reach forward, reach ahead, and do more. And so I am very eagerly anticipating the action plan that you're going to be putting together in conjunction with our students. And I, I know we have some brilliant students in our board who will be contributing greatly to this, and I'm really excited about it and looking forward to seeing what we're going to start doing in the future.
Trustee Burns?
There we are. Through the chair, I'd like to echo, and we're back. I'd like to echo the previous statements made by the trustees who have spoken before me. Certainly, this has been a very encouraging report to read, seeing how the HDSB has made incredible advancements province-wide in tackling the issue of climate change and in reducing our carbon footprint. One stat that I particularly liked is that we, in the, from 2014 to 2016, we were able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 3.5 thousand tons in two years, from, I believe, close to 22,000 to about 18.5 thousand, which is percentage-wise as well, an absolutely incredible achievement. I'd also like to emphasize how important it is going forwards that student voice be incorporated into the development of a possible action plan. I've seen in my term as a student trustee, the incredible passion that the students of this board have for climate issues, even recently, in recent memory. We have the Green Youth Unconference, which had an incredibly successful timeline and attendance. There were also students individually taking action. One student from Evil Gardener that we have spoken about at a previous board meeting, sitting outside his school every Friday, and even joining a political party despite his age. There was also a student from Abbey Park High School who, by himself, individually started the movement that led to the town of Oakville declaring a climate emergency. Even as part of Student Senate, speaking with student senators, who are often leaders within their schools, the idea that climate change is the issue that they see as what must be prioritized is adamant. Everywhere I see that within our students. I cannot emphasize enough how important it is that student voice be incorporated going forwards. And I'm very, very, very happy to see that the recommendation provided with this report includes part of that.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the speakers list. So thank you very much. It's quite the report, and is a great first step. Okay, so we are up to notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none. Up to Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Drew Vance. I've got three items tonight, and we'll, we'll start from most challenging to best. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Radek to help me with this one. As all trustees are aware, and the entire world is aware, there's a coronavirus, COVID-19 going around. And we have many trips that go out of our schools to Europe, to the United States, sometimes other parts of Canada, and Central and South America, and some to Asia. I've been in consultations with many directors around the province, around decisions that are being made around those trips. And Superintendent Radek has been in close consultations with the region of health of Halton, Region of Public Health Halton, around recommendations. It's a tricky one because the federal government has put out travel advisories, and so far, those travel advisories are Iran, China, and Northern Italy. And we have trips that are going to Europe. And as you've seen, that every day there are an increasing number of cases around the world, and sadly, some increasing fatalities as a result of COVID-19. as a result of COVID-19. So we've had several meetings. We have a committee that's chaired by Superintendent Ruddock, and it includes many of the people around this table and some that aren't around this table. And they have conference calls with public health. And they met yesterday to talk about trips. And today, it was at school operations. And we've, we've come to a decision that all trips to Europe will be canceled. And all trips to Asia will be canceled. Now, one of the requirements we have for our students is that they get cancellation insurance. We're not sure that cancellation insurance will cover them in all cases, but we could not let that guide our decision, because this is about student health. And there's, there's all sorts of mitigating factors. Students might be held in quarantine for 14 days. They might be in quarantine in a foreign country, in which case, we'd have to provide a staff member to remain in that country with that student, et cetera. But parents will not be out of pocket. If insurance is not, if they're not able to get insurance, the board will provide the funds for the parents. So, because it is late notice, it is, it is a terrible shame for many kids have looked forward to these trips for a long time, and some have worked hard to save money to go. And for parents, these kinds of trips are great, because they can allow their kids to go to foreign lands and have good adult supervision with them and feel confident and assured that their kids will be safe. Unfortunately, this is the case. I would, I would suggest that every public board in Ontario, and including our co-terminus board, have made similar decisions. The decisions vary. Some have just chosen to stop travel to countries in which there's an advisory. Other countries have just put blanket, other boards have just put blanket cancellations. Our co-terminus board has put cancellation on all trips. So we're still allowing some, but we are, there is the caveat that we will still be monitoring information that we get over the coming days to make a decision or not. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Ruddock to provide any other. And then I will provide, I will ask Superintendent Etoff around any communications that going. Our intention is not to put out a general note, but to put it out specifically to the schools and the individuals in which they were going to the case. There's no point when it probably only involves 100 odd kids, letting 65,000 know that this is what we're doing. So Superintendent Ruddock.
Thank you. Through the chair to trustees. We have an updated message from Public Health today. And we've added to that message to principals this evening. And a message will go out to families and to staff tomorrow. And you'll also receive it this evening. They've revised their screening protocols again to include any travelers from the Hubei Province and from Iran are to self-quarantine for 14 days upon their return, regardless of any symptoms. And, and then they continue to require self-quarantine for travelers from any of the other impacted regions. If they are showing symptoms and within 14 days upon their return, then they self-quarantine as well. Their letter has some precautions and reminders about families traveling over March break, and some assurances for parents that not only is it still a risk, a low risk in Halton, we don't have a confirmed case, but it's a particularly low risk for schools in that students of school age appear to be the least impacted group of students by, the least impacted age group by this virus. Some additional actions we are taking, starting on Monday, we're increasing our cleaning protocols for touch surfaces. We're asking that staff reinforce and teach or reteach the preventative measures such as hand washing and respiratory etiquette, as well as increased vigilance. So having teachers build it into their day, into their schedule, that they're taking kids, certainly our younger kids, not our high school kids, to, to the washroom to wash their hands on a regular basis. We're reminding administrators of the posters that we sent out for their washrooms around hand washing, as well as the Prevent the Flu poster that was provided to them several weeks ago. We've also got some reminders for administrators to review safe food handling practices with any parent volunteers, staff or students that handle food, because we know that we have breakfast programs, hot lunch days and food schools. So we've got a lot of food in our schools, as we just heard from Suzanne. We have stockpiled some hand sanitizer and a spray and leave disinfectant, sort of disinfectant that you spray on a surface and you don't have to go back five minutes later and wipe it off. We're saving those items for when we really need it. So we want to make sure that we're not using them now when it's not the really recommended course of action from Public Health. And then we'll run out of it, and at this point, you can't buy it. So we do have a little stockpile of hand sanitizer for when we do need it. As Director Miller has spoken to, we have really reconsidered some student travel, and we will continue to monitor student travel in the months of April and May. So for now, we've only made a decision around travel in March. We are doing some pandemic planning. So we have another team in addition to the team that meets weekly for the COVID virus. We are, we have another team that's meeting around pandemic planning and make sure that we have a plan in place if we do get to that stage in this, in this current epidemic. In terms of communication, as Director Miller said, we are in regular communication with Public Health and our co-terminus board. We are having regular conference calls. We report daily to Public Health any students that meet the criteria for the screening protocol. We have frequent communication from them to push out to our community. And I would like to thank the Communications Department for a really quick turnaround on those communications. And then we also have translated documents, some that are translated by Public Health, but the additional translations are being paid for through our Equity Department. So we thank them for, for that additional work. And on a side note, but related, we are anticipating a decision from Public Health early next week around the scheduled suspensions for our elementary kids under the Immunization of School Pupils Act. Currently, in the region, there are about 2,000 students on the list scheduled to be suspended the Wednesday or the Thursday after March break. I think it's the Thursday after March break. And Public Health is considering pausing that suspension process due to their focus on the COVID virus. That's all I have.
We have a few speakers on the speaker's list.
Yeah, there isn't a whole lot to add between the director and Superintendent Ruddock. I think a couple of just the key pieces around, around communication are, we met with our system administrators yesterday to give them a heads up on some of this information, as well as the decisions that were going to be made around the trips. Superintendents of affected schools where trips will need to be canceled, we'll be notifying them today or tomorrow morning. And this will be followed shortly thereafter by a communication template that those administrators can use directly with students who are going to be impacted by the cancellation of those trips. Likewise, there'll be a broad communication update just around coronavirus, noting lots of the information that Superintendent Ruddock has outlined. And that'll be going out to our communities within the next day or two. And with that will be, obviously, the communication from the region, because that's, that's the primary source of, of direction that we are referencing and helping to share within and beyond our communities.
I would just add that we know that some students will be extremely disappointed. And for some who are in grade 11 or 12, this might have been their last school trip opportunity. It's unfortunate, but of course, I'm sure trustees and the community at large can understand the, the pressure that we are under to make a decision to keep our students safe and not expose them to a greater risk than being at home. I also suspect that some parents will be relieved that we have had to make this decision, and they don't have to make that decision. So, so it's, it's complex and unfortunate, but it's, it's a situation that the entire world is wrestling with at the moment. And I'm sure, I'm well aware that schools all over Europe are wrestling with this, schools in the United States, schools in Canada, and many, many jurisdictions are, are dealing with this. So I'll turn it over for questions now.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you very much for the report, because I've had many parents contacting me, because there are school districts in some of the affected areas and in Germany and other areas that are closing schools because of it. And they want to know if we're prepared. And it's great to hear that you are looking forward at if we ever, God forbid, have a pandemic. Let's hope that hasn't happened. But I just, it's great that, the fact that we are being proactive and thinking forward, so that if the worst happens, we have already made plans. So thank you very much, and thank you for the report. It's good to be able to tell parents that we are trying to protect the children at a ground level with the washing of the hands and reminding them about that type of thing, and then moving on to the worst-case scenario.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is, are administrators and staff at liberty to substitute local trips and activities? Should the environment be conducive to doing so and it be deemed safe? And my question comes from just basically what you said, for some of these students, this would have been a, you know, they're kind of culminating, icing on the cake kind of thing. And maybe there's not anything that can replace it, but maybe there's something that can be done.
Through Chair Drenz, to Vice Chair Al Harrison, I would say it's highly unlikely. Most of these trips are during March break. You know, I, I believe that we have very empathetic, empathetic principles, and they will do what they can to soften the blow. It's a suggestion, I think, that's worth us putting out to them, though, to see if there's any kind of substitute that can be arranged for these students. Like I say, I think it's unlikely, because most of them were during the March break, and, and school administrators don't have much time to get that kind of organized before. So, but certainly, it's a suggestion that we can put out to our administrators.
Okay, there are no more questions on this particular item.
Thank you, Chair Drenz. More on the good news front. We still have not, the situation with the OSSLT, the literacy test, has not changed from last week or the last board meeting. We're still in a waiting pattern, but time is ticking away as these students write March 30, March 31. And I would, I would categorically say that our schools, nor are, am I aware of any schools in Ontario, that doesn't mean there aren't any, but I am not aware of them, are prepared for the literacy test. And so we are still awaiting a decision from EQAO, the Ministry of Ed, the Minister's Office, whomever's making the final decision. So I think it was important to keep that in the spotlight for trustees to be made aware of. So, okay. And the last one is truly good news. A young lady from Aldershot High School, and it's unfortunately is left, because this is not here to hear this, but we'll send her that information. Now I've got to find it on my phone. Where is it? I want to say congratulations to Daisy Rosenblood, silver medal in the 50-meter freestyle meet in Toronto, and to Coach Ray Machelli. She also won a gold medal. Superintendent Truvan, I thought she won two medals. Yeah. So, and that is at OPAHSA. So that's her, an Ontario champion, and second place in Ontario. So well done, Daisy. And that's my report.
You rock, Daisy. Okay. Up to communication from the chair. As you can see in the package, there are several letters, including our own. It's interesting just to note the vaping letters. That's not our first letter on that. And, and also just to note that in PEI, they are potentially, I think it's potentially, I don't know if they voted yet, to move the age to 21. So I, I, I hope that our province actually moves in that direction. And our letter is in there, which was shared widely, very widely. So I will have some comments and questions a little later on. But we're going to move on to committee reports. Are there any? Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. And briefly, trustees are reminded that March 11, so next Wednesday, we have Committee of the Whole. On the agenda are a number of things, including implicit bias training, strategic enterprise risk management, governance survey. So the subcommittee will be bringing back a draft report for trustees, mandatory student fees discussion, and that's something that was raised by trustee Gray. Let's see here. And there's a couple of small efficiency items that we will be talking about, including committee reports, ironically. Thank you.
Okay, and we are now up to trustee questions and comments. Vice Chair Al Harrison.
I'm going to wear out my welcome. Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note quickly that last week, I believe it was, that trustee Rocha and Superintendent Puchetti and I attended at Oakville Town Council, where they had a special meeting related to the Community Energy Strategy that was developed by a task force that Superintendent Puchetti was very active on, a number, as well as a number of other community partners we delegated. And that planned strategy was approved unanimously. So thanks to the town for their leadership in that regard. And also, just I guess, my comment is that it was really great to be included as a community partner and to have the opportunity to delegate.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair. I want to thank Director Miller for sharing the invitation from the mayor of Oakville with the Oakville trustees. As a result, trustee Rocha and I were able to attend Wampum Belt Exchange between the Oakville mayor and the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation Chief Laforme in recognition of the 200th anniversary of Treaty 22. Thank you.
Excellent. So I'll start off with, it's that time of year. Robotics has started. We had four teams compete at Durham College this past weekend. We have 10 teams in the board altogether. So the four teams that competed this weekend were Oakville Trafalgar's, one of Oakville Trafalgar's teams, because they have two, and Dr. Frank J. Hayden, and Georgetown District, and M.M. Robinson. And Hayden made it to the semifinals, and Georgetown competed against M.M. Robinson in the finals, and M.M. Robinson's team alliance won the, won the, won the game. So they won the tournament. So this weekend, we have more teams starting to compete. I know that that includes Burlington Central and Robert Bateman, and I believe the other Oakville Trafalgar team, as well as Garth Webb. So there are several tournaments that happen all through this month and through part of next month. And that happen all through this month, and through part of next month. And if the, if anybody's interested, I'd say the best, the best competition to go is the McMaster one, because I believe we have nine out of our 10 teams competing. And I believe that's the first weekend in April. I can let you know. Okay. Go ahead. Yes.
Sometimes it just happens.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate Trustee Gray on her great fundraising, or support initiatives through a community organization that she's part of. She's recently pitched the Halton Learning Foundation and Halton Food for Thought, and both organizations were successful recipients of funds raised in that evening. I believe both organizations were awarded in the range of $10,000. So, good on Trustee Gray, and also other trustees who are supporting local initiatives in their communities.
Okay, there are no other speakers. So I have a few questions, and these pertain to the announcements that the Minister made yesterday. So, first off, I'm looking, I'm looking for confirmation that directives have come to the board to change the funded class size average for next year to be 23 to 1, down from 28 to 1?
Yes, through the Chair, that is correct. Yesterday, the ministry released memorandum BO4, which confirms budget planning details around class size for the 2021 school year, and the funded average at 23.
And do you have any idea at this point, what sort of implications that has for our board?
We are still waiting for other details. The memo dealt expressly with average class size. So there's other details that impact our staffing. So we're still analyzing those, and we'll await further clarification. But it, it would be our hope that a preliminary forecast would be, we would be in a hiring position, because our average class size was at 24.85 this year. So we would hope to be in a hiring position.
Okay. And also, he mentioned that e-learning will be a parental opt-out. I'm assuming that will also mean Guardian opt-out. And I'm wondering, at this point, how will it be handled? Because I'm a bit concerned that parents, ESL parents, and parents that may have a, you know, trying to just get through life, will now potentially have to set up special appointments with guidance counselors to be able to opt out of e-learning, if that's what they choose to do. And I'm wondering, will there be a clear, easy process? Will it be a priority of the board to make this process clear and easy? And will we be owning the process, or will this be determined by the ministry?
Through, through your Chair Drabens, through Trustee Drabens, for most of your questions, we don't know the answers. This, I suspect that it's, it's still at the negotiating table. It is an announcement from the province. I expect there would be some clear direction from the province on what needs to be done, and, and how to do it. I think because it's a provincial initiative, they would likely want consistency around the province on how it is implemented. So I expect that we will get some more direction. At this point, we've had no direction, because it's, it's, it's part of the negotiations in some respects. So, yeah, so I think we just have to wait. And I'd be reluctant to put any kind of communication out at this point around any of this, any of these things, until we get some clear direction from the ministry. We have had some direction around the 23 to 1, but it's, it's limited. There's a lot of missing information that we'll need to get that our HR. I would, there is one clarification, and the Minister said, said this, and talking about parental choice. I would say that it's also student choice, particularly in grade 11s and, grade 11 and 12. The Minister did mention student choice in grade 11 and 12, but I think that it will not just be parents. Those will be for the younger grades, so.
So, just for clarification, so, the cohort that they've been talking about, having to have this requirement, is the cohort that starts in grade 9 next year? So, that, if, if the e-learning is not expected until grade 11 or 12, there is still some planning time available?
No, I, no, not, I, I, I'm sorry if I misspoke. I don't mean that grade 11 or 12 is when it will start. Grade 11 or 12 students will be able to make the decision themselves, not their parents. The province has not given directions. We're working under the presumption that it begins in grade 9, and therefore, it would be parental choice at that point. And it is intended to start September of this coming year, school year September 2020. But again, this is March. I think we're in a kind of fluid situation. So I, I would be loath to suggest that anything is carved in stone at this point, that there's still at the negotiating table around these things.
Okay. I appreciate the, that we don't have a lot of information at this point. I have constituents asking me questions, so I just wanted to ask you. Okay. Are there any more trustee comments or questions? Seeing none, we've exhausted our agenda, and I declare this meeting adjourned.